Good evening. This is Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Committee of the whole meeting at Ames School. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Present.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber? Ms. Kleiber?
I said here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Verihad?
Here.
And Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Former president?
All right. First item on the agenda is Welcome to Ames School by Principal Todd Gierman.
Welcome District 96 Board of Education, Dr. Ryan Toy. Welcome back to Ames. This is our meeting spot for many, many meetings and love having you guys back here. I think the last time we met, I was with my third grade teacher, Ms. Reddiker, third grade students. And we did a little presentation about the cow we adopted. I had nothing to do with this picture here. I sent Mr. Tofano just a few slides to throw up there about some things I want to show you. Cool stuff we're doing at Ames. And Mr. Tofano took it upon himself to go into the archives of our photo library. And this is 2013, my first day in District 96, actually first day of school. My first, yeah, this is it right here. So I know I haven't aged it, but that's what you're thinking right now. Okay, so Ada the cow. So we still have our Ada the cow that we adopted. I was looking for a growth chart on Ada. I found this on the Facebook page. This is actually the cow we have as a third grade class. So we're very proud of how Ada's doing. And I'll be able to provide more updates as we go throughout this school year. But just wanted to give you a recent picture of that. We've been hydroponic gardens. We have a couple of these growing here at Ames. Our upstairs, so they're well lit library. Here's some romaine lettuce, a couple of different kinds of lettuce here that we grew in. Our fifth graders harvested the lettuce yesterday. Got some gloves on, went to teacher's lounge, washed it. Mrs. Allen, who was supervising this, got some cucumbers, some carrots, and they made some salad. So fifth grade sat right in here and made salad for all 75 of our fifth grade students to enjoy. And already had parents reach out to me going, "Mr. Gierman, how's this happen?" Like my child just told me they had a salad at school. And I've been trying to get me salad for like seven, eight years. Like, well, you have to grow it yourself. That's what it is. But everybody ate their salad. We had a really good time with that. We just got done with our One Book One School here at Ames, The Wild Robot. Great partnership between the Ames PTA. I want to give a shout out to the Ames PTA for how wonderful they were in providing these books for us. And we have Mrs. Collins, Mrs. Munson, and Mrs. Reddiker that helped to lead our One Book One School during the month of January into February. And we had a great time reading the book, answering some questions about the book, and getting some prizes in return for those questions. And it's just great, great, great event that we have here at Ames. And Mr. Miller, our new PE teacher here this year at Ames, partnered with the American Heart Association Kids Heart Challenge. And it's a fundraiser. It's not a door to door. It's all do your fundraising online. It's all safe. And it's for the kids' heart challenge. So the students participate in different activities and work with Mr. Miller, talking about heart health. So there's some health lessons involved in this as well. Very proud to share that Ames raised $5,377.98 so far. Our goal was simply to reach 3,500. We started this mid-January, so we're talking about a little over a month. The amazing families in Ames were able to raise this much money for children who may have some heart challenges. And the money's continuing to rise up. It's just amazing. So very generous families. And I think that's my last slide, but one more thing, we're still doing our Dive Into the Day of the Dolphin Way. That's our SEL curriculum that we have. I shouldn't say curriculum, but it's a program we have each morning. It's a block down in the schedule. February just wrapped up the month with kindness, celebrating everything about kindness. And started today talking about optimism. So we, each day of the, each day of the week, we meet from 8:20 to 8:50. It's all hands on deck. Every staff member's in a classroom and we're talking to the kids. Morning meetings, circles, discussions, and it's all about optimism and how we can be optimistic in our lives. And can't say enough about my staff for really embracing what we're doing with our social, emotional learning at Ames this school year. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it back over to you guys for a meeting, but thank you again for being here at Ames.
Thank you.
Mr. Gierman. All right. At this time, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Okay. Next, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? All right. Are there any board member comments? No?
No.
Nothing? No? Okay.
Everyone looks at me. I do it usually.
I think I looked at everybody. Stephanie, I was told you have not seen. No, okay. All right. Then that will take us to committee reports. First committee under that is education.
Okay, we met last Friday and it was pretty hefty agenda, but we're going to be hearing about some things tonight. So I'll probably just leave it to that. But still working on science curriculum, still working on SEL initiative curriculum, still working on getting our teams working together, which Angela's going to talk about. So I'll probably just hand it over. But lots going on.
Good evening, everybody. As Sherry had said, we've been working under Goal One and Goal Two on a few education committee items. Nora will come up and talk about the SEL update, but for now, I'm going to talk about a couple of updates that we're working on under Goal One, High Rigorous Instruction. And those two things are the science curriculum and a new, some new work we're going to be doing on Empowered Teams. So I'll start with the science curriculum. Just want to give you a quick update. We will pilot two different curricular resources. One is Science Studies Weekly and the other one is Mystery Science. Mystery Science is a resource that a number of our teachers across the district started using during the pandemic. So we're going to explore the full, full resource as it stands now, post pandemic, to see which one of those two will be, will meet our needs for science instruction. With Empowered Teams, we will be working, we're looking to work with the Catalyst for Educational Change, CEC, who is the group we worked with for strategic planning. CEC coaches on Empowered Teams, which is a structure that helps staff members with collaboration. And so looking at collaboration to improve, continue to improve student growth. The way we're going to go about the Empowered Teams professional learning, though, is a little bit different than how we've done some of our professional learning. And that is that we're going to, CEC is going to work with our leadership, our building leadership, so that our building leadership then is taking the information they're learning to their staff members. So sort of like a train the trainer model, but allowing our building leaders to have ownership over this work that we're doing. For Empowered Teams, it's similar to, it's going to work with our collaborative time that we've scheduled for our staff members. So in our master schedule this year, we've provided grade level teams at all buildings with collaborative planning time, at least twice a week for 30 minutes. Some grade levels at the elementary school have five days a week for 30 minutes. It depends on which grade level and how the master schedule worked. But we want to focus that collaborative time on more than just talking about maybe, not just what lesson you're teaching, but how are students doing with the lessons you're teaching? So the Empowered Teams work will be done in three modules. The first module will be about focusing on collaboration, focusing on teaming. The second module will be on focusing on learning. And the third module will be on focusing on results from learning. And so we'll meet as a whole group with the CEC coach, myself, and the building principals. And we will put together the school level professional learning. And then the CEC coach and myself will meet individually with each principal to then talk about those unique aspects to different buildings. So whenever I talk about this and explain it, one of those unique aspects is when we think about Hollywood, Ms. Hefner has a unique aspect with teaming because she has a single section school. So the way she teams at Hollywood will be different than the way Mr. Gatz or Mr. Gierman team, or even Ms. Gorman with a two-section or three-section school. So we'll do whole group planning for professional learning for staff members, but then the coach and I will meet individually with principals to talk about those unique factors to their buildings. The principals will then take the professional learning to their staff and begin to implement it with their staff members, sitting in on some of those meetings. And the CEC coach and I will then come back to the individual principals to talk about how are things going? What challenges might they be seeing, seeing that we can problem solve together? And what successes are they seeing? And then we'll go and do the same thing with Module Two and then go and do the same thing with Module Three. So we're really excited. Martha and I are really excited about the work that this is going to just jumpstart. We have a lot of different pieces that this is going to end up bringing together quite nicely. So we are through standards-based reporting. We're looking at our assessments and aligning those to our standards. And now we're going to be sitting as teams and talking about how students are learning on those standards. So there's a lot of pieces throughout the district that this is going to just come bring together nicely. And we're just really excited about the work that we can do with this, with this program.
So this would be a contract with Catalyst for Educational Change. They were previously consortium for Educational Change. It's the same group. They just changed their, their name slightly. And what I'd like to do is present a contract, even just under consent agenda, at the March 15th meeting. It's about a $28,000 annual expense for them to work with us over the course of a full year. And again, as Angela described, it's a lot of ongoing work, essentially kind of a coaching role with the principals and then directly and indirectly with the grade level team. But we really do think this is a really next big step around everything that Angela just said, around aligning our standards better and really unifying the school district to a greater extent. It's an interesting concept that teachers talk about teaching and maybe not as much about learning. And, you know, again, teams vary quite a bit, but looking forward to really helping teams with sort of a protocol and a process to formalize that. And take advantage, in a good way, that we had really reworked our master schedule and our special schedules, as you know, to find more time within the school day for our teachers. So.
Yeah. Am I right in thinking that we had stopped working with them on our goals?
Yes. So we really worked with them to set our strategic plan in motion. Then we went, moved forward to working with them on what we call our Living the Plan. Consultant that we were working with left CEC. She worked independently for a while. We worked with her. That was Arlana Bedard. And then when Arlana left her independent consulting, actually worked for the Illinois Association of School Boards, we then substituted in Don White and Gary Zabelka, who are more of an independent educational leadership solutions group. And they are the ones that really helped us in a lot of ways with the KPIs. They were, and they actually, they're coming in next week to help us with a half-day Living the Plan session. So, so yeah, there's been kind of a morphing of the who's who on that. But still a really strong organization. And again, we just kind of fell into some consultant changes around the strategic plan.
So will the coach that we work with be anybody we've worked with before or this?
Angela knows her from West 40 work, right?
Yes. So she's actually former curriculum, my role in Berkeley. And then when she retired, she went to work with Catalyst for Educational Change. So we haven't, as a school district, worked with her as a coach, but I've worked with her through my role. And then another, Berwin South is working with her. And so I also talked to the person in my role in Berwin South, and they're doing the Empowered Teams work. And so I've gotten a great idea of how it's been working at Berwin South and the success that they've seen from it.
So you're even a little bit more prepared when consultant comes in?
Yes.
Because you know what they've done at Berwin?
Yes.
It's something we've been talking about, even pre-pandemic, we've talked about, like, you know, this idea of professional learning communities. It's very similar work to that. It's really best practice, effective practice around education. The teachers really need the time to collaborate, to really problem solve together around how students are learning, what to do with those results, how to refine teaching based on those results. So.
Yeah, I would think they would confirm everything you're saying. And I can imagine being at a one-section school, that you have to go out of your way to either remotely meet with teachers in your grade level from another school or go to them in person. And it's a very challenging environment. So I'm hoping you can give, you know, strategies for everyone to work together and hear from people teaching the same thing and how are you doing and how are your kids doing? And I know that that's what teachers do anyway, as much as they can, but I'm happy to see a strategy. So.
What is that? I think you mentioned that Hollywood being a one-section school, that their collaboration would be different than the other schools. I mean, what are the plans for Hollywood there? How is that going to work?
So I mean, of course, work with Ms. Hefner on how we finalize the structure. There are a number of ways it could be done. It could be done as kindergarten, first grade pairing up, second, third, fourth, fifth. It could be K1, 2 pairing, or becoming a group, and 3, 4, 5 becoming a group. Currently, what happens is Ms. Gorman and Ms. Hefner have set their schedules so that that collaborative plan time for first grade happens at the same time at Life that happens at Hollywood, so that they can Zoom to have meetings together. And it works really well with some grade levels, and it hasn't quite taken off with a few other grade levels. But that's where we're at right now, so that they have a three-person team as well, like you would at Central or at Ames.
And we've even worked at different times to give them, like, their planning time right up next to lunch. So if they actually wanted to go over in person, that would work too. So a lot of the, the structure of it lies in the schedule. The master schedule district-wide.
Which is why we've been very thankful with the special area teachers being a 1.0 because it allows for the flexibility needed to be able to provide this collaborative plan time.
Okay. Any other questions for Angela? Otherwise, we're going to pass it on to our Nora and then Goal Two, SEL curriculum update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And Angela's hitting the road to drive to Springfield. She's going to be at a conference early, starting this search early tomorrow morning.
Safe travels.
So drive safely.
Have a corn dog while you're there.
All right. So, good evening. Thanks for letting me talk to you tonight about the SEL Action Team in general and the pilot specifically. I was thinking that the last time I spoke with you two, I was just coming out from an SEL Action Team meeting. And so I was riding the SEL high then too, but it's just really exciting to see.
And you just have this afternoon too, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying. This afternoon, we had a meeting and it's 60 degrees out. It's the first day of March. It's been a long couple of weeks. And we still had such an excited group of teachers in the Central Library, ready to talk about what they've been reading. We've been doing book studies together, work on kind of thinking through our next steps for the SEL Action Team in general in terms of building in the SEL standards into the curriculum and really making it more than just, you know, it's not just a curriculum program, a half hour a week, but it's how are we changing our practices to embed these ideas? So it was just a great meeting this afternoon that has led me here today. So specifically tonight, I wanted to give an update of the SEL Curriculum Pilot. As I mentioned the last time, we have chosen two programs to try in classrooms. Actually, since I drafted the memo, we had some late adds to the group. So we're at a group of 25 of our K5, our elementary teachers, who are piloting Second Step, the new digital update right now. And then in mid-April, we'll, the whole group will switch to piloting Fly Five, SEL Curriculum. The practices and the, you know, embrace of responsive classroom had already led our classrooms to be starting their days with morning meeting. And so the teachers are, it's like what Mr. Gierman had spoken about, that kind of half hour at the start of the day. Our teachers are using that time, so it's not, it hasn't been a tremendous shift in their schedule or anything to work this, these trials in. They are each week filling out a Google Form reflection on how did the lesson go that week? What was student engagement? What was the topic relevance? What was the ease of instruction? You know, all the things that we want to know about whether or not, you know, the students are engaging with the lesson and how, how it's fitting into their, their week as a, as a teacher running a classroom and managing all those different demands. So that at the end of the two different programs, we'll be able to get together and review that data and make a good database decision on their experiences using these programs in the classroom to make a recommendation to the board of which program to move forward with. Second Step has, you know, a mechanism for letting districts try the program. They give a reduced number of lessons, but representative of the five Castle competencies. But they let you sign up as many teachers as are interested and able, as many different classrooms for no charge. Fly Five does require purchasing full year licenses, so you have to purchase the entire scope of their curriculum. They don't have a mechanism for just trialing the materials. So to that end, schools where we have more than one grade level teacher trialing the, be, you know, participating in the pilot program will share the materials for the grade level in order to conserve those costs. If we do, at the end of the pilot program, select Fly Five, those licenses would be factored into any discount for bulk purchasing. And if we don't select them, we plan to use them as supplemental materials for each grade level, K5, either for the teachers or for our social work, social work teams at each building as well. And that's the update from the world of SEL. Any questions I can answer?
Cost for the pilots, which can be seen as semi-unusual, but it says it's about almost $13,000 for each grade level. Is that per elementary school? So if we do a fourth grade at Ames or a fourth grade at Central, they're charged per school? Or is it all the fourth grade share?
The whole cost of everyone that we would, this is for, the $13,000 is what it would cost to get enough materials for the 25 teachers right now. District-wide. District-wide.
Yeah, because it's for each participating grade level at each elementary school. I thought, okay, that could get expensive if it's randomized.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Okay.
The total cost for this, for 25 teachers, which is actually because of the duplicate teachers at different grade levels, I think it's, it ends up being 14 licenses.
Okay.
Possibly 15. That's that cost. So then if we were to select it, they both, Second Step and Fly Five, their ultimate costs are relatively comparable. It's just a difference of Second Step gives, gives four weeks' worth of lessons to you for the purposes of trying it out.
So the all-in trial with Fly Five is the 13?
Yes. Yeah.
How different, sorry.
No, go ahead.
How different are these programs?
I mean, they're, they're based, obviously, in the same concepts, right? They're all, they're coming from the same perspective of, they're both driven by the Castle competencies. I would say the main, the main differences are that Fly Five, the Second Step is 100% digital. There are no materials. There are some that you can print off, but there's nothing, you know, no hard materials attached to it. Fly Five does come with some other visual supports for the classroom, some tools. At the kindergarten and first grade level, there are some like, I don't want to call them flash cards because it's not like we're holding pictures up and saying, you know, happier sad. It's like scenario cards that they, that are just more accessible to students rather than having it all on a screen. They wanted to get some of those, some of the materials off the screen and into just, you know, work between a teacher and a, and a group of students. So there's some physical components to the Fly Five program. They are both very, have made an effort to make character-based, engaging stories. Fly Five is a little bit different. Their characters go through K5 and age.
Almost like a story.
Yeah, like the, when you meet these kids at kindergarten, you're still going to be talking about the same kids in fifth grade. There's about 12 different characters and families and everything. Second Step is a little bit more, just more piecemeal. There's not that consistency. And then in terms of the frequency that each program recommends, you're going through lessons. Second Step is still in that model of one lesson a week, and then they have different activities that are all tied to that one lesson. Fly Five has a model of, you can do it that way, but there's also different additional lessons each week. So rather than just some suggestions for other things you could do that week, there, it's a little bit more prescriptive and a few more, like, materials available for fleshing that out.
Truly are different ways to try and teach, and different thoughts in how best to present the material. And one is more story-based, one is more rigorous or directed, as it were.
Yeah. I don't know if there are any other major differences that stand out to me.
I think you said Second Step is about four to six weeks of pilot instruction. What about the Fly Five? How do they gauge how long the teachers are working with their program?
I'm sorry, they each, they gave four weeks of, four weeks for each unit. So there's actually 16 lessons they can choose from in Second Step. They're still going to have seven weeks. And they, they, because we have then 16 lessons, they are being able to choose a little bit, like, what's relevant to their class right now. We're, you know, trying to make sure we're kind of tapping into each lesson at some grade level so that we have kind of as much of a range as we can. So they'll each have the same amount of time, but there's just more lessons for them to choose from, from the Fly Five materials than Second Step.
Gotcha. Thank you.
With the goal being so that we would likely come to a recommendation to the board, May, we're thinking May, June?
May or June.
End of, end of school year to likely adopt one of these and make the full purchase that we've done. K5, right?
Yep.
Well, thank you. That's, I'm glad you're excited and the rest are excited.
Yeah. And, you know, the feedback even just from the first two and a half weeks or so is, you know, and it's Second Step, which is familiar to some teachers. I would say that there was some, like, is it really different? Feedback has been positive so far. Reports of, like, students really getting into the lessons and, you know, even sharing some things later in the week that they covered a couple of days earlier. So it's promising. I'm excited for what this could do.
I know there's, well, obviously a difference in cost in that one does cost and one does not for the piloting.
Yeah.
But assuming, you know, at the adoption phase, do you know if they're comparably priced to?
They're, yeah, they're comparable. I can't tell you, like, exactly, you know, they're not exactly one-to-one, but they're definitely within the same range in terms of charging per license, per grade level. So it's all attached to a teacher. Both, both pricing models are, however many teachers we have participating.
Pilot money goes toward adoption, should you soon adopt?
Right. Whatever the ultimate cost, if we do with, go with Fly Five, if they say, okay, if you purchase, you know, 25 licenses, that's X number, X cost per license, those would be factored in to give us that reduction in costs versus just, you know, buying one at a time.
Were there other curriculums that were vetted out that we didn't want to pilot? Yeah. So these are, these were kind of like the final two.
These were the two that ran, that rose to the top. The team at the end of last year had narrowed it down from, I mean, they spent some time looking at a number of curricula that are on the Castle website that are, you know, vetted by Castle and appropriate for, you know, different age groups or different populations. And where are they, where have they had research done on their effectiveness? Narrowed it down to four that the SEL Action Committee then heard from all four vendors and said, and saw demonstrations of all four programs, that these two are the ones that, I mean, there was a clear, a clear delineation between these two feel like they meet our needs, they would engage our students, they are comprehensive and meet our goals that we've listed in the strategic plan. It kind of just, they ticked all the boxes. So.
It just, it sounds like we're going to pick one of these two. And so I was just curious. It's because you've already whittled down all the rest of them. I'm just thinking, like, what if you don't like either one of them?
It's been a process of funneling down from a bunch that are out there. It's, you know, obviously a big, an area of high interest right now. So there are a lot of programs, some more established than others. But there's been a lot of work to kind of get down to these two, to put the effort into using them in classrooms.
Perhaps this is an obvious answer to many of you, but it's not to me. Are there any opportunities during something like summer school to incorporate any of this? So if we were by May, let's say, ready to adopt, when could we get the benefit of maybe already having these, you know, the temporary pilot and like, assuming we go with this one, to try to incorporate in summer school? I'm not sure. Like, I know it's a more condensed day, fewer hours, et cetera.
I think it would depend on what the summer school offerings are. I know in the past, or last summer, I know one of our social workers led some classes around, you know, around, you know, using some of the social thinking curriculum. So there might be some overlap in there. I don't know if, you know, this will be my first summer of really being aware of summer school and not still be trying to learn the school names while summer school's going on, but I'm not sure. In the class period, you know, since it is pretty condensed, how much availability there would be for teachers to use them. But again, I think it depends on what, what's being taught. Certainly, I would think of any of the teachers who are piloting these materials, are teaching summer school, they might be more able to incorporate some of these materials and tools. The professional development, once we've selected the curriculum, we're looking at those institutes at the start of school, using some of that time to train all the staff on the curriculum. So not everyone will have had that at that point.
Any other questions for Marla? Thank you.
Thanks.
I guess we'll pass it on to Mr. Marle.
Next to Joel, yes.
Well, it's not my thunder, it's Stephen Ryan's thunder. They are going to present the updated plans based on the input that we had last time, plus, or, that was two weeks ago, plus the commentary from planning and zoning and how best to reach our project goals while also satisfying some of the regulatory requirements that surround us, so.
Please, everyone, just see your end.
So as Joel said, let me see if I got the, there we go, all right. Thanks. So as Joel mentioned, when we met last, we had come back with some feedback from the planning and zoning, preliminary feedback, based on the site plan that we had developed. And just to kind of refresh your memory, we had a redeveloped recreation field at about forty thousand square feet, which is an increase from about thirty thousand, or thirty-seven thousand square feet that we have right now, existing. We're asking for a reduction in parking spaces from one fourteen to eighty-seven, and then...
And Ryan, can I interrupt right there?
Sure.
Just because that's the, the reduction in parking spaces from what we currently have or from what the?
From the, what is required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's really not?
Good, good point.
Because I know that's something people are paying close attention to.
It's actually an increase in what we have existing in the parking lot, but it's a reduction of what is required for off-street parking from planning and zoning.
Can you just, for record, can you just, what is the current number of spaces?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. Because I know there's staff members that are worried there's going to be less parking. There's actually going to be a few more.
There's actually going to be more, yes.
Right.
Yeah, so, so I should have been clear about that. So, yes, we are, we are asking, and I'll get through the variations.
Sorry, interrupt right early.
No, that's okay. I know we've talked about a lot of iterations and a lot of information. So the, the planning and zoning requires one hundred and fourteen spaces of off-street parking. Currently, we have seventy-seven, and we're requesting eighty-seven. So it would be an increase in what we have today. You know, with this site plan, and I'll just go through a few of these, as, and feel free to interrupt me, because again, you know, we've talked about a lot of this, but it's a lot of information. Providing a playground that would service primarily Central Elementary, and we are requesting to fence that in. Also, we would do a permeable concrete, much like we did here at Ames, basketball court and four-square. And then we would do bicycle racks just to the north of Hauser there. So the, the focus on the feedback from planning and zoning was looking for a reduction in some of the impervious spaces, the narrowing of some of the sidewalks, primarily the one here running east to west, bringing students in, and then some discussion about the sidewalk to the south. So I'm going to move through to our next slide. This is really just more of an architectural drawing. This is what we submitted to planning and zoning, but we wanted them to understand and you as well, what fences we would propose. For the fences that run along the recreation field, which I'll, I'll show in a moment, we would propose the same wrought iron style fencing that we have here at Ames. This would be the garbage enclosure, that would again be a cedar slat fence, bricks around to match the existing building, stone wall that we have near Hauser that would create a planting island, and then the baseball backstop fencing, which would be a PVC-coated chain-linked fence. So really, this is just illustrating the variation that we're requesting for the parking, which we already went through in detail. So that's, that's what this is, that's what that's showing there. The other piece of feedback was that we're looking for, there's a village ordinance that requires green space on the interior of the parking lot, and so we are not meeting that code, but we are providing extra perimeter green space here and some here. So we're looking to match that square footage and the intent of the ordinance. So that would be the second variation that we're going to be requesting. The third, and the one that's been most discussed, is the fencing and where that fencing would be. We talked about it the last Board of Education meeting, that a fence alongside Aitkinside was important for safety, you know, screening that from kids and balls running into the road. So there, we're proposing a, a four-foot wrought iron fence, and then we're also going to propose to bring that all the way down to separate the recreation field from the parking lot. So I think that was the feedback that, and discussion we had at the last board meeting. We also are requesting a variance for the backstop fencing. It's a height that's higher than four foot, four foot high, so that is something that is, is not per code. The other variation that we would be requesting is just simply to have this trash enclosure, which is a requirement in the street yard. So this lot is unique in that it has sort of two front yards, or street yards, if you will. So all of this is considered street yard. So that just means that we need to request a variation to have that beyond the, the edge of the building. So beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I really just wanted to kind of update you that, you know, this is what we plan to talk about at planning and zoning on March twenty-second, when we request these variations, and, and then we get their feedback and move on to the Village Board.
There's been a lot of discussion about the lilac bushes along Aitkinside.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to the drawing that shows the fence in red?
Yes.
Exactly. We don't have any reason right now that we need to be, do significant work between the fence and the sidewalk, correct? That we know of?
We do not, no, no.
So it may be possible to save those and maintain that vegetative barrier that seems to be rather important to a number of people.
It could be. I guess what I would like to do is really look at that with the landscape architect and the development of the site, or the recreation field in particular, and the exact location of those. But yeah, I think that there is possibility. We have actually pulled that fence in a little bit from where it was originally, so I think there is that, that potential.
I remember that you did pull that back, just to help with the perception of having a fence right on the property.
Right on the property line, correct, yeah.
Yeah, I would support keeping lilac bushes. I mean, I live really close by, and they've just been there for decades, and they're gorgeous, and it's such a lovely thing for the kiddos to see when they come in, and it's kind of a landmark for our village, anyway. So anything you could do would be fabulous.
Sure.
Quick, Ryan, quick point. The skip dash lines, that's the property line. And if anybody's at, can you highlight that, Ryan?
I'm going to try, my, runs are all in there.
Yeah, that's the property line, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Can you remind me, since the basketball is rotated now, what happens to the maintenance vehicles and things like that that we talked about? I might have missed that conversation.
Sure.
Trying to do a couple different things there.
We talked about a couple different scenarios. Well, access to the maintenance garage, which is, of course, is facing the basketball court. We would move that overhead door.
The other side?
Yeah, facing the parking lot. So that would be the primary entrance to maintenance, and then those pods would go away. That's still in discussion.
Right, I was wondering where you're going to put the pods in?
I don't know where I'm going to put the pods.
We're on a pod elimination program right now, so we're going to clean the maintenance garage so that we can store them.
So we, we have surveyed the garage. We've talked about some options of rearranging storage to make it easier to get things around and make it accessible from that side, the, the parking lot side. So I do think it's doable, so that's our intent there. And then the vehicles would, you know, park in the parking lot or, you know, in the, the service alley.
And in all seriousness, the pods take away from play space. I mean, that's, so we would like to create more storage in the maintenance garage.
Yeah, they're not exactly attractive, but right now, they certainly are.
Yeah.
So on the vegetation with the lilacs, would, would that hold true across the parking lot as well? Because I was just kind of hanging down here, kind of taking a look at some of this stuff. No, on like the, off of Aitkinside, because there's like a big tree right where that crosswalk was and everything, but...
It goes all the way across.
Oh, here? Okay.
Yeah, that, the part that you just zipped with the...
Yeah, I would say, again, I, I'll defer to that discussion at a later date. I'd like to get the landscape architect to look at those. I mean, I know some of those shrubs are not in good shape. Developing a parking lot would make it very hard for those to survive.
I just had your whole conversation about the drip line with the trees and everything, and there's a tree right there, and I'm thinking, this thing's going to die as soon as you put a backhoe in it, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, we're, we're planning on, as you see here, and you'll see a more developed plan later, but, you know, adding shade trees that would be healthier and more vibrant, and, and if screening is, is important, you know, and that's something that we could look at, but I think new is going to be a better bet than trying to save what's there currently.
Yeah.
At least in terms of those.
Okay.
The lilac might be a different story, for sure.
There was some conversation on the planning team about the islands and trying to use the islands for, I can't remember exactly how it was phrased, but legitimate vegetation or something like that. I just, I was curious if that was something that's...
Yeah, so you see these two islands on either side. Previously, the way the ordinance reads, for every five parking spaces, you need to have a hundred and forty-four square feet of green space. So it's kind of, you count it off and you put your green space. That doesn't really leave enough green space for a tree, for a shade tree to be healthy and to grow. So what we had talked about and they were amenable to was combining those islands. So we do have a sizable island where a tree could survive, and, and so that's what we've done here on these two sides.
Okay, so we were able to incorporate some of that to, to some capacity, that feedback?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, the other discussion we had, just to kind of remind you, we had a, a center walkway with some green space in the middle. I think everyone felt that maybe it wasn't necessary or it could be redistributed. So we did that. We took that green space and redistributed it to each side, so these are actually larger parking island, or I'm sorry, green space islands. And so we now don't have that center walk anymore, so.
Yeah, which, quite honestly, when we first talked about that, it didn't even dawn on me that that was, you were just aligning it with that crosswalk right there. And so while we're trying to divert traffic towards the field, people are, I mean, if you create a space, they're going to walk through it. So this, hopefully, would be more of a deterrent, but I think that you, you had called out that south walkway as to whether that was really necessary, and I think the more I think about it, if you're going to take away the middle and you're trying to get people to, you know, go around, creating as many opportunities to do that and not walk through the parking lot, which is what we're trying to avoid, is, is, seems like a rational thing, just thinking about human behavior, so.
And, and some sort of screening, you know, shrubbery could lend itself to that as well, so.
Oh, yeah, just cut it off entirely, so you can't just walk over the grass, yeah.
So let's say a child's coming from the other side of Aitkinside, from a home, walking across that crosswalk, how would then they expect, are they going to be anticipating using the sidewalk by the field, and will there be people, because that's a driveway they're going to cross? And currently, I don't think they do cross the driveway. They come, they do come in the parking lot and kind of get escorted, but...
Two, I mean, I, I won't speak to all of the operations. I know that usually someone is staffed out here to direct the kids, not through the parking lot, but around. I don't know all those operations, but that would be...
Yeah, that's more of a staffing issue, but...
Yeah, I think that would be the best intent.
Ryan, there's also another element of coordination with the village, because they have a traffic study that they did a few years ago that suggested relocating that crosswalk. And so we would need to talk to them about seeing perhaps what's a better place for that, because there's already a separate consultant who said you should move this...
Crosswalk outside of the parking lot.
Correct. Not our, we don't own it, so it's village, but we would talk to...
No, but there's a stop sign there, and so that, that is going to take a lot of consideration if you're going to move that.
That was also being suggested as being moved as part of that traffic study.
Because then you have the property driveways as well. Yeah, this is not necessarily something that I would ask you to design, obviously, but it's just a consideration of what happens to the children that, because the fourth and fifth graders often come on their own from the other side of the campus compared to the younger ones on the front.
And we had even talked about, and again, some of this, first we have to get it approved and make a plan, and we have some time, but, you know, there was even some talk about, would you flip even who gets dropped off in the back, and because of the longer queuing into the parking lot, maybe more grade levels could come to the back. So I think it will shift operations. We just don't know exactly how, how yet, so.
Right, yeah.
But I think, right, some of these things we solve with staff supervision.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then also, I remember, at one point, we talked about the curbs. So just thinking with that fence, part of my, my original thought process was that fence is going to help just block off traffic, but we're actually going to have a curb there now, whereas it just sort of rolls off into that lot today.
It would be a six-inch-high curb and sidewalk.
So there'd be two barriers to prevent anybody from trying to jump the curb or anything, but really just blocking that off entirely.
I think in one of our early iterations, talking about this area right here, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had a fence in between the sidewalk and the parking lot, and then also the recreation field. That felt like a little too much, maybe. So you're correct, we still have a six-inch curb and sidewalk that separates the sidewalk from the, the parking lot, from the asphalt. But then beyond that, to keep balls in the recreation field, we would have that four-foot fence there.
And just based on some of the comments, the fence will help apparently keep cars off of the lot that didn't realize tend to go onto that field sometimes, so.
The fence plus the barrier curb will make a difference.
Right, yeah, it's kind of a double layer system there, but, but it, I feel, the curb will help just with the fence, because the fence was supposed to be a little bit of that, but at least you have a curb there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not going to help, it's not going to stop a car from jumping the curb if something bad were to happen, that somebody wouldn't just casually...
No, I mean, a car could technically go through the fence, too, but, you know, the safety measures is, is as much as we can provide. And again, I think, you know, the, the most important safety measure here is to keep kids that are on the recreation field and balls from, you know, just carrying, you know, the momentum, carrying them into, you know, the parking lot, or chasing a ball into the parking lot.
And then Martha, I'm just curious, maybe, probably from an operational standpoint, would we still block those driveways often? Because I think you had said before, we kind of have a, once you're in, you don't leave until the end of school type policy. Would that still be necessary, or is that a...
I mean, I think we have to sort of live into this a little bit, but I think the idea is you could safely leave from this parking lot, and you're not cross, you're not going across any kids at play. You know, the reason cars don't go anywhere at lunchtime is because kids are playing there.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we don't have that restriction at Ames, because we have them all on the side.
Right, so you can come and go.
We used to, though.
Yeah, we used to, right, yeah.
Right.
And at Hollywood, it was really, yeah.
And that is kind of the design intent to separate them, so you could potentially leave, and there's, there's not the issue of, of kids being anywhere close.
Yeah.
So you've essentially rotated then the playing field and the backstop from where it currently is, kind of at one-eighty?
We had, yeah.
How will you address the neighbor's concern in the home next door?
So right now, there's, I think it's a seven-foot fence that runs along here.
Yeah.
It also provides, there's quite a bit of screening, so we would intend to leave that in place.
Yeah.
I think that, you know, thinking about, it's not the newest fence, but it is in good shape, good enough shape. Thinking about replacing that, any screening that we would provide would take some time to get mature. So we think that that's kind of the best.
When you say screening, I think the better description, it's almost heavily intertwined with...
It's intertwined with, with...
It is.
Existing.
Yes, the...
No, some of us talked about this the last meeting, but I don't hate it like that. I think it actually is charming.
We've talked about this with other people, though.
But I'm not the neighbor.
The baseball field is supposed to be used by, if it's used for actual baseball, it's going to be used by less powerful kids, so really, we should not see fly balls going across the fence.
Literally, all is what I've come to understand, yeah.
Because during, during school, it's probably more like kickball.
Well, it would certainly save money to leave the fence the way it is.
Ground ball.
But it would.
They play football, they play soccer.
And again, the bigger concern is about that privacy and that separation that does exist today.
Oh, sure, sure.
And again, if we remove one, they're both coming out, and so it would take, you know, several years to get that to a mature point where you'd have that same, that privacy.
For the proposed four foot, four foot wrought iron fence along Aiken side and then along the sidewalk there abutting the parking lot? Is that, I'm assuming that's just continuous, there's no need for like a gate for ingress or egress? It's all accessible, the field is accessible from this bottom area, so really no gates are needed.
No gates. The one thing we've talked about, and, you know, we can, I guess, give you some more input later on, is whether or not a break in the fence would be appropriate. One conversation was if there is queuing, and again, as Dr. Martha Ryan Toy said, we need to live in this a little bit to understand how it's gonna work. If this is heavily used as drop off and cars are queuing here, there's a possibility that kids will then get out and want to, you know, go onto the sidewalk, go onto the recreation field. So that's a discussion that we've been having. But to direct answer your question, there are no gates that we're proposing for, for this fence here.
Maybe, yeah, I was thinking of that scenario.
Going to school, right, not necessarily.
Yeah, going to school, but, yeah, if they wanted to, if they were going directly to the recreation field.
They don't want to.
They will, they just will.
So which, you know, it could be good.
I could see the parents saying, open your door and get out. It would take some monitoring to make sure that they're exiting in the way that you want them to exit.
At all our schools, you know, we have a structure to pay teachers before, before and after school supervision. And I just think regards to the traffic conditions, it's a good practice to have adults out there supervising children coming and going to their school. So I'm confident we, we can sort of solve around all those pieces with, with staff. But thinking through the very specific details, yeah.
We're getting there, we're getting closer.
So my last question is the field itself, and that is still undetermined what that field is gonna look like. And I know, I think WT is kind of helping us with a lot of that water drainage and stuff. I know Jason did a pretty, as much of a deep dive as he could do at that point in time, just kind of talking philosophically and stuff like that. But do we have any other idea of like, I guess, I'm, I'm, I just want the field to be usable. I don't really particularly care, so to speak, of what the material is, but it has to be, if we're gonna spend the money, it's gotta be usable. Do we have any further insights on like what a natural versus, I'll just say unnatural, because I feel like that turf thing really gets people riled up. So like natural grass versus a not natural, yeah, an artificial surface of some type, and like the drainage and stuff, and.
I mean, either can be designed to be drained, and I mean, we can certainly invite Jason back to, you know, talk through some of that detail. I know it's been some time since we really dug into what each of those, you know, designs are and how they're different. Either one can be designed to be drained. There is a reality that grass is not gonna be usable, even, even as a designed field, is not gonna be as usable as turf. It just doesn't dry out as quickly. If we get a rain like we got, you know, a couple of days ago, it's just, it takes longer. That's just a reality. So, you know, there isn't, right now, you know, we have certain criteria that we need to meet for the entire site, for pervious versus impervious. And so that's a discussion that we're gonna have on the twenty second. You know, we're doing permeable pavers closer to Hauser here, also in the parking lot that helps us offset some of that. We've increased green space, so it's an ongoing discussion in terms of that percentage of pervious versus impervious, and how that will be viewed by the village. I don't know if that answers your question, but we could get either to work. Artificial turf as a reality is more usable more of the time. Doesn't mean it's the right solution, but it's, that is, that is a fact of that product.
Yeah, it, so does, does a non-natural grass surface materially change the pervious calculations and all that kind of stuff, or?
It does, so the village.
Because if we have a giant, I'm just thinking, if we have a giant drainage, and I remember him talking about it, well, it could hold two to three days worth of water seep into the ground, it wouldn't all get, so is that what they're looking for? Is that the piece that, that matters, or?
It's, certain materials, like for instance, engineered wood fiber that we would propose to use here in the playground. That gives you a, a percentage, it's a percentage of perviousness, so it has some drainage quality. It's better than concrete, but it's not as good as grass. They view artificial turf very much the same way. Well, not the same way, they, they view it as impervious, so more like concrete, not like grass. So our intent in our discussions with the village has always been to look at this as an aggregate site, this entire site. And what is the calculation and the percentage of pervious versus impervious? It's a special use, it doesn't comply with any of the zoning in a residential neighborhood. So all of these are discussions and exceptions that we have to request. So I don't, you know, I mean, that's kind of.
Well, I'm just curious, because we're not asking for a variance because we don't know. Is it possible we need to go back again and ask for another variance after this? And is it possible to avoid going back another time and like re-litigating this whole thing? I guess is where I'm, just trying to get a sense of like what that process would look like.
No, yeah, no, that's a fair question. I do think it probably is a second discussion that we're gonna have to have. The question was asked at our preliminary, if we would have made a decision on what direction that we were gonna go, you know, as a, as a district. We have not yet, so I think that they are reserving comment until that decision is made. So I'm sure it'll be a discussion on the twenty second, and, and I expect that we'll get some more input on how they would view one versus the other.
Okay, because I just, my, my just concern is we have a small patch of grass over here that hasn't been usable for the entire year, because we're trying to get the grass to grow. And I'm thinking, well, if I can't get three thousand square feet of grass over here without kids tromping on it, how am I gonna get forty thousand square feet of grass with two hundred kids tromping on it and maintaining it?
Well, we can make it better than that. We can.
It's never been addressed. I will say that we've been asked, well, I, I have been asking for many years, like, have we ever done a study? Have we ever tried to improve the drainage? We haven't, so I don't think the current status that we have is anything near to what it could be. It's not perfect.
Drainage is part of the plan, right?
They'll both have drainage, no matter what, whatever you do, you're gonna have to. I mean, MWRD is gonna demand that you put in some kind of water containment system, no matter what.
Yeah, either would have drainage, correct. Yeah, what I said about the one versus the other is one just does drain better. We certainly would drain better than the patch of grass out here. And it would require, both would require, and we talked about this before, both would require different but maintenance programs. You know, that would have to be part of it if you want either one of them to be usable. So that's, you know, something that.
So it gives just a level set on that, because I know we did an extensive drainage issue here, but it wasn't with the grass area specifically in mind. It was just the broader drainage, and so would we do something more specialized for this area because it is intended to be a larger play area? Is that the right way to think about it, or?
No, it would be very similar to what we did here. I mean, we did permeable pavers in the parking lot. I mean, we, we were detaining as much water as we could. The playground was a good place to do it, so we, that's, we've got detention there. So it's, and then we've got permeable pavers coming along the side of the building here, again, to, to offset our percentage of pervious versus impervious.
Can I try and, but you're referring to the grass out here.
Specifically the air, yeah.
The grass here that does not have a significantly enhanced drainage system like that would.
Correct.
So it's really.
That is correct.
This is a relatively unmaintained space, that's why it gets, and uninfrstructured space, that's why it, it has a harder time growing.
But didn't we do like a big catch basin thing here too, to try to catch water?
I'm referring to the drainage under the grass.
Yeah.
Whereas this will have a system that lies underneath the grass and with the vertical wicks and.
Okay. But there's stuff underneath the playground here too.
There is stuff underneath the playground, underneath the permeable pavers.
That's playground, that's not grass.
But not underneath the grass area.
Yeah, that's why.
We think like the mulch area gets, so I guess that's where I keep going back, because like, you can only do so much with the water, and it's, so, I don't know.
I think we did a, we did a bunch of stuff, and I don't remember exactly all the details, but in the front, we were doing, pulling what, like pulling, we did work on the front of. When we redid modifications to Hauser, I mean, to Central, we had to do some stuff, so I know.
Yeah, what I would say, if this helps clarify, the, the green space out here at Ames, the kickball area, that's not a good representation of what a designed recreation field would be.
Okay, that's all kind of what I'm getting at, yeah, 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 okay.
This will be a drained, needing special maintenance field. What we have here at Ames is your front yard.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, yeah, without getting to the details, that's fair.
Or my front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
I should pick on me.
No, my yard looks like garbage too, and I have a drainage system in it, and it gets super soggy, and it takes a while to drain, but it's better than before I had a drain in it. So we still gotta be a little careful with it, so that, that's, I'll just kind of run it through my head, it's like, this is gonna be really expensive, I wanna be able to use it. Otherwise, it's just a waste of money. I'd prefer natural, but like, if it doesn't make sense for the cost and all that kind of stuff, then I'm open to other ideas. So I just, I'm trying to get a sense of what, you know, how we, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of what that is.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can distribute those, there are architectural sections that Jason shared, and I think we shared with you, you know, at an earlier date. It shows that, that section, and it is similar drainage. You know, the difference is beneath the artificial turf, you've got only a stone base, you know, so it's gonna drain much quicker. Whereas underneath grass, to get the grass to grow, you've gotta have dirt, it's gonna hold more water, it drains at a slower rate, so.
I guess what would be helpful maybe for us to, I mean, to look at this again is determine, based on sort of what we've experienced thus far. How often are we gonna be able to use it? How usable is that field gonna be? Because if it is gonna be dirt, I mean, like, like Wesley, I do prefer natural, but again, if, if we're gonna be losing like twenty-five percent of the time that we can use it. I mean, that definitely changes the, changes my opinion.
I've been trying not to ask that specific question, because I know you don't have the answer to it.
Right, I'm not asking for the answer, right.
He knows it, because we never adjusted that property ever, in my knowledge.
No, but I think, when we come, when we start discussing, if we could at least have an idea.
Sure, yeah, no, I think that's a fair question. I mean, we could look at the, the design that WT would come up with for that type of field. And it would have to be, again, maintained, so we could reach out to a maintenance consultant, and, you know, they can give their professional opinion on that, you know.
Because.
In this climate, in this, you know, what would, what would be the expectation?
Yeah.
A reasonable expectation in normal year.
Because like, would they, would they be able to kind of give us a current assessment of drainage rates, and then what that improvement would look like? Is that kind of what they would get into, or is, is it hard to kind of tell current state versus potential future state?
I think, I mean, WT can give a pretty good idea of that, based on their design.
Can they? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, just in terms of.
So they would be able to give us some idea of what that improvement would look like?
Yeah, I think what the, you know, the maintenance consultant would be able to tell you is, you're gonna have to, you know, mow it, you know, X number of times, and water it X number of times, and fertilize. And then, you know, and then knowing all of that, in this climate and in this region, you know, you're gonna use it, what, twenty-five percent less, or whatever that number is, I'm just throwing out a number. I think that's something that they would, they would know, and we could help to provide that information.
So do you want to bring WT Engineering back to a public board meeting? Would that be after planning and zoning, probably? That'd be best, maybe April, May?
Yeah, I think so. I would say that we are, we've, we've talked about on a drop dead date. We are getting, we have a, thinking about a twenty twenty-four spring construction, which has been the discussion. We've got a process of village engineering, MWRD reviews that is six to eight months. So we work our way backwards, you know, we're getting, we're getting closer to a date where we need to decide what the engineering is gonna be, so.
So maybe April, committee the whole?
Yeah, I think.
It's only a month away.
I think it'd be helpful to also, you know, give us some stats on how often that plastic carpet would need to be replaced, whether it's every eight years. That's also something that costs money and needs to be considered, and I, I think I'll just throw this out there. We have agreed to become a C4 Initiative partner with the C4 Group and the Riverside Community. And we do have an interesting opportunity to provide a carbon sink rather than something that emits carbon. So it's just something to consider, you know, do you want this space to be truly a green space? It was interesting to me to at least hear about the olive pit suggestion with the drainage, maybe there's a compromise there. You're still gonna have the plastic carpet, but, you know, do you choose natural materials for certain reasons? Because it's less environmental impact, it's less chemical overflow into the water supply. There are lots of things to consider. I'm just saying, we, we just recently agreed to be part of this initiative, and I went to that format and you were there as well. And I, I think natural materials do align with a lot of those goals talked about there. I'm not saying you have to do this, I'm saying it's an opportunity that might be looked at. And a teaching moment for, you know, the little people, so.
And I don't disagree with any of that, I fully support all that. I just want it to be usable.
Oh, absolutely, and I, you know, I, I'm not sure we've heard.
I don't, I don't need a two million dollar unusable forty thousand square foot space that we get to, wish we had made different decisions on.
And I'm not sure, I haven't ever heard, you know, that it's unusable a quarter of the time, for sure.
It's, well, oh, yeah, it's.
Well, with proper drainage, I've never seen a space that's done properly.
With proper drainage, I do wonder about capacity for our maintenance groups, I would imagine, if we're talking about.
Sorry, I think we've, this is not under, this is not within the capacity of our, our crew.
No, we'd have to have some.
This would have to be a separate contractor coming out with their trailer full of stuff and doing the mowing and the aeration, or whatever it takes to make it a good. And making sure that that drainage continues to work well, so it stays drained and it stays usable.
Yeah.
So I think in addition to WT, can we find a maintenance consultant who can give some thoughts and perspective on what they see in reality? Because it's the reality that we, we care about, it's the, how, what does this do five years out?
Yeah.
Yes?
Or ten years out, and fifteen years out, and, yeah.
Well, right, I mean, RV obviously had the stone issue that was upside down, stone placement for their field. And OPRF had to replace theirs, probably because of a bad, I don't remember, it was a vendor problem. But there are, there are certain costs to artificial things as well, and, you know, it has to be done a certain way and maintained, and the fill has to be replaced. These are all things that I, I still haven't seen both sides. I, I don't feel like I have the information either way on either, so it would be interesting to hear. I did appreciate hearing about the alternative fill. It's still a plastic carpet, in my opinion, but it's something. It's at least a sustainable resource, which is nice if some of us are, I know some of the community cares about, you know, the environmental impact and how we choose our materials, so. Something to think about.
Taking, taking things in slightly a different direction, we're talking about, comparing to Ames here, I'm wondering, we haven't talked much about the playground. But I'm wondering, are there any lessons to be learned or anything that can be conveyed about how Ames is used here? And if how we've had some after hour use here, is there anything that can be done to prevent that or minimize that? I mean, I guess what I've heard is that a lot of the folks who've been using here, the playground here after hours are junior high kids, so. That's right, right, excuse me, right next to their school. Would that become a place of after hours entertainment, intentional? I guess, is there anything that could be done to prevent that?
Sure. And, you know, we met with the village public safety director, and we talked a lot about this, not only fire access, but, but, but safety as well. And I think that, you know, there are two sides to each, each idea that might be helpful, right? More lights could be helpful, or it could be, you know, attract kids to hang out there. One suggestion was security cameras, and that's something that we've already talked about with this design, where those would be located. I know Commissioner Buckley said that sometimes he's seen properties will put a, a blue light that, you know, looks like they might be being recorded, but is only a light. So there's, there's no, nothing is foolproof, and I won't speak for public safety, but that was the feedback that we got from him. But every little bit helps, so I think each of those things we would look at, security cameras in the parking lots around the new playground would be helpful. I think it's, you know, the feedback that we've gotten is light the parking lot, so it's safe for people parking there. Don't light things too far into the recreation field, because then you're just gonna attract people to come hang out, so keep it toward building lighting.
I know there's a driveway, obviously, there now next to the playground. How far does the resident come toward the northwest? Like, how far up do residents? So would they, would residents be, would a residence be looking directly at the playground, you know, if they had kids there? Like, I can't remember how far the homes come up.
That's a garage that Ryan's pointing to.
Yeah, that's a garage. That's sort of the edge of the, the building itself, so.
Gotcha.
It wouldn't be looking directly from the house.
Yeah, I couldn't remember when those homes, you know, I'm talking about.
As you can see, we're proposing some shade trees as well.
That provides additional screening, so really, I would argue the sightline is more green than it is in the current existing configuration.
Oh, sure, probably. They hang out at Turtle Park too at night. I'm not sure you can stop them.
I think they hang out at life, there's no other development.
They wander around on their bikes, so. That's a hard one.
Well, and then there's an argument that is this. Well, and then there's an argument that is this a safer space to be at where.
There is, there is an argument to be made for that.
Rather than having kids randomly trying to go find a different space, so.
I, I guess my concern, I know we've, we've had some, I guess it was an aspect that I don't know that we fully contemplated when we were planning the playground here, of the impact to neighbors next door and just something I'm hoping that we could be more mindful of. It sounds like maybe we're not in a, in a light of, light of, you know, sightline that, that's not lining up the same way that it does here. And that there, you know, there's a garage, I think was said there and I imagine that's the backyard of the other property. So maybe it's not as big a deal or a bigger concern. But it is something that I hope we've considered and it sounds like we have considered it somewhat.
Yeah, it's a good point and we have, have thought about that. I think where this is located is correct, the garage and kind of the backyard and not actually, not quite the backyard of 110 Aitkinside, so it's in sort of a secluded area in that regard.
Well, there's another consideration too, and that is the property that we were, was having concerns was previously next to a residence that we demolished. So we moved our use next to them. They had not previously experienced that. Whereas here, we are not changing the use of our facility. It's still a grassy field that kids can be in, it's still a parking lot. In fact, parking is actually moved away from the buildings and the homes to some degree. So I would argue that the use is not significantly different than in this plan as it is right now. Whereas next door to us, we did change the use. We, we took a building down. We brought everything next to that and they weren't ready for that.
Well, and right at their window level, which is, you know, it's challenging and I do feel for them, that's, I agree with you, you know, that's hard. We should anticipate who's looking at it and it's noisy too. It's not just gonna be sight. But you know, if the blue lights work or the cameras.
That was just one, one suggestion from Commissioner Buckley. He was telling some.
Tell the teenagers aren't watching us discuss.
They're, they're one of our, you know, top viewers.
Other observations or questions?
This is very helpful. Thank you for coming back. I think I was the one that kind of brought up the suggestion just to have one final pass on everybody being comfortable. And we have one more board meeting before we actually go, so just in case anything else pops up, we got a little bit of time. But I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, I have it on my calendar, I am planning on trying to attend just to make some comments for my own personal support of what you've done and just to kind of highlight and wanting to make sure I fully understood what exactly we did incorporate and all that kind of stuff. Because I think there's been a tremendous amount of feedback from the community, from the staff, from planning and zoning, from this table and all of that. And I think you guys have done a really good job of trying to incorporate as much as that as you can. So not everyone's gonna be happy with it, but so goes mass project communications and stuff like that. I think we've, I really think we've done the best ability we can to take all that feedback into account. We still have the field discussion to have, so yeah, I mean, you know, April, I think if they could come in April just to have a real deep dive on that. And that, that is gonna be a big community topic and so I think we need to be well informed of the decision that we are going to be asked to make on that as well. So if we could do that, I think that would be good.
Right, so when is the village, I guess I'm still foggy, when, when would the village take a look at the impervious versus?
So March 22nd, you have a planning and zoning.
So they will discuss it at that meeting?
They will discuss it.
Whether or not a variance is required, or I guess it is.
I think, well.
Whether they're gonna recommend the trustees approve it.
Right.
Yeah, we are, we are at a particular percentage. We have a couple of options where we could add some permeable pavers, additional permeable pavers in the parking lot. We really need to get their feedback on what's acceptable as a special use.
Are they similar to the ones in the sustainable lots on Burlington and here at the swim club past by the river?
Yep, and here at Ames as well.
Yeah, and here, similar looking.
Yes, yep. So then after that step, we would either likely come back to planning and zoning for a final meeting hopefully and then onto the village board. It's usually two to four weeks after that. So. So do we want to invite WT Engineering to the April Cal? Is that what I understand?
That's what I'm saying, so April 5th is Committee of the Whole.
Okay.
And you mentioned WT coming back and talking about sort of usability overall. You also mentioned like a maintenance consultant. Maybe that's something Jason can gather from them.
Okay, yeah, I can.
Because we wouldn't hire a specific maintenance contractor for that until probably it's been built out. I mean, Jim, we worked with a certain landscaping company, it could be them, but it might not be, it might be, I guess we don't know that yet.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to Jason and see, I mean, they've designed in many of these fields, both types, grass and artificial. So I would think he probably would have a consultant that could at least give some, not necessarily specific, but general feedback that this is kind of what you can expect from a grass field with designed drainage, this is the usability. You know, it's not, it's, it's not gonna be a hard number that we can all, you know, track, but it would give us an idea in this region what we could expect.
Ryan, it can't be a hard number. We know that. It's a perspective on what they've seen and what their pickups have been.
And what is, and what is required to maximize that usability?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ryan, do the village's calculations for impervious surfaces vary depending on the fill? Whether it's a sustainable fill versus a crumb rubber or?
It does not.
It does not, this is not.
No, no, they view it as impervious across the board.
Gotcha, so the code just says it's impervious?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks.
Thanks, thank you, Ryan.
I did see, to steal your thunder, but Blythe Park construction update on there, I didn't know if that was something that you wanted me to.
That's just the word announcement. So we're having a meeting next week inviting neighbors and interested staff here, parents who want to come and hear about it. So we have really no, really just kind of a reminder for this group that construction will start spring break. There will be, you know, heavy equipment in the north parking lot, right? That's their staging area.
Correct, yep.
Music class will be moved to the library or the art room, gymnasium if need be, so.
Just keeping everyone up to speed that there is an active construction zone. The contractors will be separated from interacting with the school through separate entrances and blocking devices and that there is going to be some disruption, not disruption, but things to pay attention to. And the noisier work is intended to be over spring break, at least in the beginning.
Several meetings.
Testing schedules, I mean, we were really, we've been, I think, very proactive around planning for, you know, construction happening during the school year. It's gonna happen kind of down at one end, but it's, it's not, you know, there are art classes down there at that end. So I think we've made a lot of agreements and plans and determinations to obviously keep kids and staff safe, minimize disruption, keep noise levels down, so I.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, that we have had multiple meetings with the contractor as well. They're very familiar with working in schools when school is happening. We've got a good phasing and separation plan, so we're, we're on good track. And the heavy demolition is gonna happen over spring break, so that should be completed when kids come back to school. Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, are we on to more exciting things of the policy committee?
So.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so we are, this is the first reading of the remainder of press 110 update with reviewing policies that fall under section six, dealing with instruction and section seven, dealing with students. Just by way of reminder, we kind of divided up this larger update into some very different Committee of the Whole meetings and then taking action on them back in our previous February regular business meeting. We closed sections two through five and now we're on to six and seven first reading. So I'll just kind of go through it the way I normally do where I try to identify areas where there were more substantive changes outside of just like legal references and footnotes where the content of the policy itself has changed. So just based on the way that the agenda is set up. So we've got 615, school accountability, that's just kind of updated in response to ISB state goals for learning. And you've got a fair number of policies that fall under section six, including like 620, school year calendar day, 650, school wellness, 660, 665, those are all just legal references and footnotes. I know 660 curriculum content, we updated the policy in terms of its content back in March 2022. So again, there's no proposed or substantive updates to that policy. They're just legal references and footnotes. The first policy here that does have a proposed change, I believe it falls under our five year review and monitoring, which is 6130, the program for the gifted. So this one fell under just that five year review. And in reviewing it, it did prompt some discussions and research, particularly with Martha and Angela and the leadership team. So we actually looked in your board book, you'll see a couple of different attachments. We looked at the original press policy that we did not originally adopt. We looked at the press plus one that we adopted in April 2016. Maybe that was around the time the program was established, Martha? No, maybe not?
It may have gone through a revision.
Okay, maybe, yeah.
The program has been around for longer than that, yeah.
Yeah, but it seems like between the two, actually the original press version is more comprehensive than ours and it includes some important language that both Angela, Martha and myself believe should kind of be reinserted. In consulting with Angela, no other revisions were recommended at the time. I know we're thinking through perhaps a review process in the next year or so. But for now, for 6130, we're actually proposing that we adopt the original just press policy update, not the press plus.
Okay, so the second attachment is what's being recommended.
Um, let me see how it's, I, I have printed copies, but.
Okay.
Let me open six.
Yeah, I was making sure that it tuned in as the question.
Yes, yep, the second attachment, just called press policy as opposed to the press plus policy. So there's just some language, additional language that we feel is prudent to include, to have a more holistic encompassed policy that's reflective of our program for the gifted process.
I guess also that there's, there's a note there that said the footnotes are not intended to be in the policy, but so just that bottom section gets xed out.
Oh, yeah, that all gets, that all gets removed when it makes its way onto it. And I don't know what like conversations happened originally that this language was not adopted or included and that we went with a more watered down policy, but.
Yeah, I wasn't here then and Angela wasn't here and we were trying to, like, it talks about sort of in line with the communities. Sherry, you're nodding, do you, I mean, it was April of 2016.
Well, yeah, I think they were trying to really be more inclusive in, I'm not sure it actually is, like you're saying. But we were told, okay, we're, by using certain labels or whatever, we're actually being, we're gonna take those out and just talk about advanced learning or moving people in and out. And so I think it really was more about labels than process. I, that's how I remember it, but.
I mean, it's not huge changes, as you know, looking at the two, but it also talks about the, you know, the determinations aren't made based on race, sex, religion.
Yes.
That, that's in the original press, but not in the press plus that we had, so it's like.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's not there.
I don't know why we took that out.
Yeah, a lot of the language of the various policies, that's been updated under what they refer to as like continuous improvement, right?
Yeah, right.
That language, direction of that.
It just seemed as we reread them that the original, the original press, not plus policy made more sense. I know Stephanie, you kind of asked like, you know, always want to hear from the board about important topics that we can bring. This would be through education committee. Is this a topic, not the policy, but the programming for, you know, advanced students? Is that something, that's something we did a robust program review, Sherry, you were on the committee, I'm trying to think, in 2018, 2017?
Couple of years in.
It was before the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but, and it is something I know on our, just overall, like kind of, it's even though it's not necessarily a formal curriculum, it is a, it is a curriculum in that it's program supports and resources that we might want to just do a review of it in general.
The state funding has always been a question to me. I'm not sure we've ever been eligible or Illinois actually offers money for some states.
If money were to become available, you could apply for it, yeah.
For gifted education. You live in Illinois and for some reason there isn't any.
Right.
So that, that always made me laugh a little bit when I talked about that would qualify for state funding because I don't know if there is any state funding. So.
Right.
But yes, we do have a process. They're different for English and math, depending as some of you might know, which I, I'm not sure how I feel about it. I have had children and it's, yeah, I think it could look, it could use some review, but.
I think it'd be good. I've had a number of parents just ask about it and I can speak to the general conversations we've had, but we really haven't, since I've been on the board, we haven't really had a deep dive on it, so I'd be interested in doing that. And it could be a deep dive sort of as currently exists and then there may be a program review. And we haven't set an exact timeline, but this, you know, it's gonna be in the next year or two, I would say.
Yeah, and, and part of that, that I, that I really think was wonderful about part of it was that we were allowing like these Hauser students that were just moving through material, but they weren't allowed to move ahead to a certain point. And now they're allowed to take kind of RB level classes, that they were never kind of that twice jump. Martha, I don't remember what we called them if they're twice jumped, but.
Maybe double.
Maybe double acceleration, yeah, just a double. Yeah, and that was something that wasn't ever allowed before, so I did appreciate that they were kind of allowing the kids to move through material when they were ready. If you're ready, you're ready. And I, I like that, you know, the Hauser team was able to embrace that and kind of, we've got many successful grades apparently for the last years that have really done very well moving through RB and or whatever high school they went to. So it, it was, it wasn't just elementary, it was some interesting changes in the junior high as well or middle school, so. But yeah, it could do a little.
I think it would be helpful, I mean, particularly as we, you know, oversee, you know, ensuring that there, we're accomplishing, you know, these goals and objectives laid out in this policy. I know when I started as a board member, it was kind of part of my orientation and onboarding to have a presentation on that. But at that point, like there's so much, it's like information overload, it kind of goes over your head. So Sherry, not to, not have you be part of these conversations, but I think it'd also be really helpful for new incoming board members to have it as part of a, a meeting and discuss like what could be on deck in the future.
I know we had talked about, and this is, this will be a goal probably that's ongoing for many years, trying to capture every student that really should be there, no matter, because we do have children that come from not as advantaged backgrounds. They may not have parents at home working on projects with them or someone with them. They might be just kind of on their own. And so we want to make sure we had captured every student that really should be there. And that's part of the challenge too, is no matter where you're from, that you're allowed to move where you're supposed to go based on your skills. So that was part of the goal.
I think that's some of the approach several years ago is to open the door wider. And I think that's the conversation we continue to have is how do you open the door wide?
How do you open the door wide without, right, there's, there's nuances to it to make sure that you're challenging everybody in the way that's right for them and not, you also don't want to crush someone's spirits, so it's really tricky and.
How do we challenge every single child to the just right amount without creating too much frustration?
Yes.
And I think that's kind of the core of what I've heard from a handful of parents over the year. And it hasn't been a significant number, but it's like, I feel like my child needs to be challenged more, but they don't meet the criteria to like formally move. And so like, where is the in-between? I can't really answer that question. Beautifully differentiated classroom where every.
No, I would hope that.
Easier said than done, absolutely. I don't mean to be facetious at all. That is the goal, that every child's needs are met. And really through the general education classroom by providing enough supports to the general education environment. That's the aspirational vision, so how do we achieve that?
I was at least told that whether it's Lexia for reading or I Ready for Math, that even if you're not in that kind of advanced environment, that you would be able to move through material at your own pace. Now, I'm not in the classroom, I'm not sure if that's happening for everybody, but that was what the goals were supposed to be, that if your child can move where they're ready, that's, I think, always been the goal.
It seems like that's what those programs are doing from what I've kind of heard.
I hope so, yeah, because we certainly don't want to leave anyone stagnating. I think that would be just tragic. But yeah, it's good, it's always an interesting question and. Unfortunately, we just don't have the state funding like some robust places do. But I think we do very well with what we have, so.
Yeah, so we'll add that to a future panel meeting, overview of the current program and.
Yeah, the five-year review that brought about thoughtful, yeah, prompted. But are there any objections for six one thirty in utilizing the, what you see as the second attachment, the language from the press update? Just have some expanded.
Can I stare at your screen?
Yeah. I have my notes up, but. No, no, that's, that's a different one, yeah, okay.
Oh, I have it up.
Yeah, we, we're not on that one.
This was just the slight modification.
This is just the one that we just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Because I presume when we put it on the next, for, I can't even think, when we put it on the next agenda for vote, we will have just the one that we've agreed to. Okay, bye.
I think this was nice that it talks about, no matter who you are, whether you're, what your race is, if you're disabled or not, you get a chance to be where you're supposed to be. I like the wording there, I think that's helpful. The state stuff, I think you can just strike that.
Yeah.
Don't know why that's in there.
Six two fifty, legal references and footnotes. The next one that had just some significant updates is six two five five, assemblies and ceremonies. This policy was actually updated as a result of a Supreme Court case with regards to the football coach having the right to pray on the fifty-yard line after games. So the advice, when we joined the Zoom meeting back in, oh god, when was that, like December, I think, was to consult the board attorney if we were thinking of prohibiting prayer in the presence of, of students. And think out of an abundance of caution, we still consulted with our attorneys. And their advice is just in line with the language of the policy, that we don't like endorse or promote someone choosing to pray, but we also don't object to it unless it's causing a disruption. And that's basically the language in the policy, right? Respecting an individual's brief, quiet, personal religious observance, but not endorsing or promoting. So again, it aligns with that. See no reason why we shouldn't adopt it, as is, we're not looking to prohibit employees from engaging in private prayer. Again, it comes to our attention that it's creating a disturbance or.
I feel like I vaguely remember this. Is this the coach that led prayer before every game?
Right, yeah.
And the issue was like, that's fine if you want to do it, but don't force everybody because they may not have, yeah, okay. And so really the, the update here is just, you can do, you do you, just don't bring other people.
Yeah, but we were even talking about like, I don't know, like at lunch or something or.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not familiar with situations where that's happening. But where it would be, again, if it wasn't being disruptive, you would just kind of respect and observe what's happening, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, was quantified as brief?
A minute, I don't know.
Oh, brief prayers, is that?
Is that a minute? Yeah, I don't know.
You just went to the Supreme Court.
It's a good question.
You could go back and read perhaps their.
Kennedy, the Kennedy versus Bremerton School District case might.
David, if you want to go back and read that and then report back.
I'll do that tonight.
Might expand on what their, yeah, definition of brief, you know.
Right, and it's talking.
Quiet, you know, who knows? My voice carries, you know.
It is interesting, it's talking about personal and not leading a group of students in something or, I don't know if we've ever had that happen. I thought I can recall.
Any, anything else on that one? The next one that also has some updates, as you referenced, was the six two sixty, complaints about curriculum, instructional material and programs. So similarly, again, in board book, you'll see that we attached the version that was drafted for us by our attorneys. You'll see our current policy that we have in place right now, which is rather small. Brief, there you go. And then the proposed press policy, which we are recommending adopting the policy drafted by our attorneys, which provides us with, you know, a process and procedure in place to address curriculum objections. There's just been a lot of member feedback on this particular policy, given the increasing number of curriculum objections. I know that's not necessarily the case for us in our district, but seems to be happening more so. So the law firm has provided Martha and the district with, you know, a toolkit to use, I think, what they drafted here.
So we're, we're not the only ones, though. I imagine others have benefited from this update as well, this, these edits.
So typically, when they create a toolkit, they, they did, oh, we have a residency toolkit from them also. And so what they'll do is if there's some topic that's maybe impacting multiple school districts, is that is exactly what they'll do, is they'll create kind of an aggregate of their legal advice and then you sort of, you know, so you pay for the toolkit as opposed to paying for individual hours of consultation with an attorney.
Is this kind of stemming from a lot of the national sex education?
Yes, it is.
Is that kind of the catalyst of the change?
Well, it's a lot of things. I think it's books, it's what they consider to be curriculum, it may or may not even be relevant. I think it's just a response to, and it's not, our, our district hasn't had people showing up addressing this, but some certainly have, so.
Yeah, for sure.
I, I, there was one thing I didn't understand, though, about the frantic copy, because there's some sections that are Xed out.
The X out portion, Dan, is the same as the current six two sixty. I just, I just saw that.
Okay.
So basically, I think what they did was they took our version, they struck out the whole thing and then they rewrote what they wanted. And I didn't do a direct, kind of just skimming it, I was like, I'm pretty sure that's.
Yeah, because we currently have opt-out, but they rewrote the way we talked about opt-out and how that, yeah, they basically just changed some.
Because I was a little confused by that too. And then when I read it a little closer, I'm like, I think they just struck our current policy and wrote it down.
Yeah, and they struck basically like the press, what, the press update proposal from press. They struck that out. So it's like all encompassing. It basically strikes out the press proposal, our little brief one and supplement.
And actually, one, and one to note, Kathy, so it says here in what's essentially the third paragraph, parents garden, seeking such exemptions must submit their request on the district's curriculum objection form and must state the basis for the exemption. Right now, we allow families to opt-out by sending an email to the principal. And I did double check with our attorney if that would be sufficient. So that would be like opt-out of health education, opt-out of the Victor Puccini Aaron's Law is one that particularly comes to mind. Not that we have a lot of opt-outs. We've had at least, I think, one family opt-out of the SEL screener. So we're comfortable, she said, if that's your process, that's fine. It's in, you know, it's in writing.
So it could be must submit their, like, must submit their requests.
Directly to this, to the building level principal in, in written format, which could include email.
So we would change the language in the final version that's being voted, that we'll vote on next time?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's suggesting take out the form language.
Or, I think it would be or, because you know, if there's something.
The ones you just gave examples on, but what if there are, you know, the.
Because really, what they want the form to be used for is that you absolutely understand the reason for the objection.
If you just say, I don't want, I don't want it, Martha, take them out, it doesn't say why. It just says, please take them out. And so the form would ask them more specific.
Or we could use the form.
I say we could, I say, my suggestion would be that we use the form, they can easily attach it to the email.
Yeah.
And then there wouldn't be the confusion about why.
And I agree with Dave. There's, there's no reason not to have the form, other than somebody doesn't feel like doing it.
Like filling it out.
And if you want to object, you can spend the time to fill out form and email it to you.
Well, at least it keeps it consistent.
Yeah, yeah.
Because then you'll get some that'll put it in their email and some don't. At least everyone would fill out the same. Yeah, I agree with that, David or whoever's.
And to your point, there's a reason for the form. And whether you read it or not, that's your choice, but at least.
At least everybody would have submitted it and answered the same questions, yeah.
Yeah, not that we're trying to create like, you know, roadblocks or barriers to people objecting, but it does allow, you know, you are kind of reading the fine print, making sure before you just kind of shoot off an email. And it helps also, I think, for, you know, even just our own continuity of like data collection. How many of these forms do we receive annually, you know, versus emails here and there that we have to.
Right, it can also help us even to understand like families opt-out because they don't understand the work we're doing or is it because of something specific to religion or a rental view in a way?
Set of beliefs.
Yes, a beliefs.
Yeah, so I, thanks for bringing that up. Anything else about six two sixty? Again, that was another substantive one. Let me see, where else? Six two seventy, guidance and counseling programs. I think that one was also technically under five-year review. But the policy is really unchanged. I don't think it, again, warranted the same level of communicate, you know, thought that six one thirty did. Six three forty, student testing and assessment, just legal references and footnotes. Six thirty, I'm kind of going out of order of board book, but keeping it within six. So six thirty is organization of instructions. That was not part of the press update, but we noticed that it was out of date since implementation of full-day kindergarten, because I believe it referenced our half-day program. So this was just caught, I don't remember who caught it, Martha, may have been you or somebody on the team caught that. So it is not a press update, but it is just like an off-cycle update to come into compliance. So those are all the ones that fall under six. Okay. Just moving on to seven, students, so seven two fifty, school administration and transfers. So this policy was updated requiring districts to appoint a liaison to DCFS. We've always done this?
We haven't always done this formally, so, right, and our liaison will be our student support services people, Pam and Nora.
So now it is kind of requiring us to do so, so that'll be Nora and Pam. Interestingly, this policy does not require that we list the names, the way some of them do with Title IX, like Angela and Chris Herbalis, but, you know, they're doing a lot, but I, I kind of like it because then there's been so many other, we had to edit so many of the other ones. The more evergreen, yeah, the better. And then under seven seventy, attendance and truancy. So the policy was updated requiring that middle school and technically high school, but for our purposes, middle school students be permitted one school-day-long excused absence per school year to engage in a civic event. We were just talking about that DC field trip and I was like, oh, there's a policy coming down that I think could technically meet the definition of what they refer to as a civic event. And also just that every two years, you know, we file our truancy policy with ISB and Martha assures me that we have a process for all of these filings that are required by certain dates, September thirtieth dates or what have you in place. So for all that are going to DC, they should be good to go. Seven one hundred, health eye, dental exam, just legal references and footnotes were updated. Seven one eighty, prevention and response to bullying, again, legal references and footnotes. Another one that's just requiring the district to file their bullying policy electronically every two years. Again, we have a process in place to ensure that that happens. Student support services, so similar to that other one, seven two fifty. This one also is updated, requiring districts to appoint a liaison to DCFS. So again, we're going to be having Pam and Nora.
Stephanie, can you back up a little bit?
Sure.
There's a rather fascinating paragraph in page two of the bullying, which, I'm going to just read it. Bullying is contrary to state law and the policy of the district. However, nothing in the district's bullying prevention and response plan is intended to infringe upon any right to exercise free expression or the free exercise of religion or religiously-based views protected under First Amendment to the Constitution. This is an interesting conundrum, because it basically says we don't allow bullying, but if you've got some sincerely held beliefs, they have to be allowed. And I don't know what the right fine line is on this. Throwing this out there is, it's awfully interpretable.
Yeah. I think it's one of the, like, very real challenges, right? That people have their First Amendment rights to, to free speech. It shouldn't be offensive, disruptive, bullying in nature.
It, it's the can you yell fire in a crowded theater, but it's not even that, because you can speak about something in public that you sincerely believe. So I just, it's a challenging one.
I, I guess, not to get too philosophical, though. But, but I guess bullying is like in a direct attack at somebody. And now granted, there's like racial, sexual, like, but I guess by making a First Amendment right would be more, in my opinion, something that you can, that you make a statement. You're, you're not saying you are this or you are that or you're. So I, I see what you're saying, I, that, when you, I didn't read this policy.
I'm sorry.
No, but it, it does cause me a little pause too, because where is that line? And so I don't necessarily agree with this policy based on the fact that, because that is disruptive then to the school, school, which we have policies that your actions cannot be disrupted to school. So.
Are you considering examples like hate speech or not that far? You know what I mean?
Oh, no, I, I.
I'm trying to figure out where, it's such a hard place to figure out.
Potentially says you don't like someone else's behavior and it's religiously, it gives me pause.
The way I took this is, this, this was written by lawyers specifically to try to navigate as best as possible these issues we're discussing now, while leaving it within the discretion of the administration. And so I, I, I am not troubled by it, although I understand it, it's definitely very dancy. They're tiptoeing around something and, and I think this, this is a lawyerly way of tiptoeing around what could potentially be a tough issue if all the stars align.
I just bring it up in light of some of the current cultural issues that we have today, where people can make a claim that they have a sincerely held belief and it is a sincerely held belief that is pretty much in opposition to someone else.
And conversely, though, I, I can see a situation where someone could say that someone's sincerely held belief is bullying.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, trust me, I'm not saying free speech is bad, because I'm all in support, but it potentially is a challenge and I hope we don't have to deal with it too much, but it's, it's alive and out there in society right now.
Yeah, it's, it's tricky. Is it, is it a one-time thing? Is bullying tends, from my understanding and definitions, tends to lean more towards harassment where it's a repetitive thing? It's, I don't envy the administrators who have to deal with this, but yeah.
I, I would think at the end of the day, what saves us and what's, would save most districts in most cases is the administration having the discretion of saying this is disruptive. This is causing an issue, this is causing a problem, it's detrimental to learning, therefore this behavior won't be allowed or this behavior won't be allowed. But if you were to put a flat-out line in the sand and say, under no circumstances, this cannot be allowed and it's written directly in policy, that's where you leave avenues for lawyers to say, hey, wait, this violates someone's First Amendment rights.
No, it's a, it's a fine line issue. I'm not denying that.
I think it's a fine line and discretion issue. I think you said it well about the discretion and the, I think it's the challenging work of our school leaders. I think of even on sort of, I mean, the other end, but, you know, even when we brought in Kerry Goldman to speak to parents, she's speaking to staff, she's speaking to kids about, and one of the things she talks about is what she calls normal social conflict and bullying. And another fine line, you're kind of talking about bullying, free speech, something that could be very sort of hateful or negatively regarded. So it's, you know, helping young children interact appropriately and kindly with each other is.
And is it a safe learning environment? We want every child to feel safe.
Welcome, safe.
And welcome, yeah, so it's, it's, and that's in the policy too, the safe learning environment, so.
No, thank you for carefully considering all of it.
We should start a podcast.
We did not have a philosophical conversation during our policy.
Well, I went even to check like the case laws and he put those in there.
I thought you were hoping one of us would pick up on it.
No, no, I mean. I appreciate you bringing it up.
I tend at least one legal seminar annually, at least one. And there's always interesting case law, if not case law, school examples. I know Pam and Nora were just at the State Special Ed Directors Conference and they talked about like the examples that get shared, they get shared by attorneys, because they are the challenging situations. they get shared by attorneys because they are the challenging situations that we carefully walk through to support kids and help off of their lot.
This is an observation and it doesn't, it what's interesting is the legal references in this one do not actually refer back to any court cases.
No, they don't. That's why we.
No, it's just the Constitution, you know, sections, yeah.
Three of, yeah.
Right.
Anyway, I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, don't be so.
But it's the Constitution and obviously.
We knew seven, what, six and seven.
Trumps, yeah. Trumps any other rules.
But yes, I agree. I think we have a great kind of administrative policy in place to investigate um bullying, complaints of bullying.
And this is why, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm just saying, this is why I'm, from what I hear from Angela, that we do have teachers who are trained in responsive classrooms who understand how to, you know, you kind of always have your ear open um to what's happening in your class. I feel like our teachers are really thoughtful that way and you can't prevent everything, but I do know that some are specifically trained in kind of making sure that we, at the beginning of the year, they have those talks about how we run our classroom, how we treat each other, what we, how we question each other.
As I just recently talked to Chris Harbalis, there will be times where he will talk to students, not discipline, it's just what you said to that other student or what you said out loud in that classroom maybe viewed as bullying. Like you didn't mean it that way, but it seems to stop, slow down, change, you know.
Understanding it may not have been your intent, it's what you did. So just think about it. Yeah, that's.
You're parroting, you look at all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
There's some similarities, yeah.
I've been having that conversation a lot. I know you didn't intend to, but that's what you did. So don't do that.
Intent versus yeah, impact.
Yeah.
Anyway, thanks, Joe, for for bringing that up and discussion. And then the remaining ones under seven, um as I said, two fifty, the the liaison which will be, uh which is now required. So um Pam and Nora, eventually just likely Nora. And then the remaining ones, anaphylaxis, um seven two ninety, suicide and depression awareness. Um those are just, again, legal references and footnotes were updated. Um seven three forty, what was that one? Oh, okay, yeah, this one is a policy that was updated to give DCFS certain rights to access student records of children in its custody. Um was my understanding of the update there.
Has that ever been applied?
Surprise, yeah, I was about to say.
Trying to think, um specifically where DCFS is requesting records because they are the.
In their care.
Custodian.
I would say yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um that that's all of the, any other discussion thoughts on those that fall under section seven? Student focused policies? Nope?
Thanks for staying on top of it.
Thank you.
Until next time.
Until next time. Disco ball is uh back in the box. All right, uh then next up is Finance Committee.
Sure. So maybe just here, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, but he's put together projections uh for budget regarding. Your just died.
Oh, your computer dead?
Yeah, uh but it just came back. I don't know. So um I'll turn it over to you.
First, we want an update on the strategic goal five, on the finance portion anyway. For the items that are are key performance indicators is, one is to keep our ISB rating at four point oh, which when you saw the audit, I don't know if you noticed in those eighty pages there, there was a page that said um we should get the four point oh again.
Great.
So we'll be starting the budget soon. Actually, the next slide is talking about a budget calendar. And one of the uh key performance indicators is to keep our expenditures below CPI, which was seven percent. So um that shouldn't be an issue in this next budget.
I I would hope we could do better than that, but.
Yeah, that's uh that's the plan. So most of the things that went into that seven percent, a lot of them don't really affect us as much, but we don't buy a lot of fuel, but our suppliers do.
Sure.
As far as the maintenance, repair and improvements and all the projects we're working on, we're still on track with those. And um we're getting uh better at responding to work orders within a day. I know when I put one in, they're usually done the next day, but I think that might be because my name's on it. I'm not sure. So I don't get a response, but they're done.
At least you take that into consideration.
And so the next topic was a budget calendar. One of the policies we reviewed a couple months ago was that we want to more formally adopt a budget calendar in March. So um this slide would normally be part of what I presented when when we started working on the budget, but um I'll lay it out in March and then I'll ask next meeting on the fifteenth if we could vote on it and approve it so that we're compliant with the policy. We're going to amend the current budget and we'll do that in uh April and May. Then we'll have the new budget that will present a tentative budget in June and approve in July. So we'll have um have a budget quickly. It's not really due to the state till October, but it um it seems better to approve the budget as you're starting to spend on it. So we started approving it in July. And then there's a few requirements at the end. So this is kind of the outline of of a calendar that I'll ask for approval on next meeting. And now the part you've been waiting for, the financial projections. So we put the new numbers in from the audit that just came out and and then made some, kind of built the future off of that one. Those are nice firm numbers that let's use that as a basis going forward. And um this this one here is what we had projected at this time last year, last February. And um we projected that last year would end with a fund balance of twenty point nine million dollars. And when the audit came in, we had uh twenty one point one million dollars. So very close. And then using those new numbers, I'm sorry, also last year, when we went all the way out of ten years to FY thirty one, at that point, we projected that we would have fourteen point nine million dollars in our operating fund balance. And that operating fund balance does not include capital or um dot, which is really zero. Now we have no dot, so we don't put money in that account, that fund anymore. Um so capital is kind of a separate, kept separate from the fund balance when we talk about.
But this does assume, I guess this this is has the withdrawals that we've made from operating into capital to date, but does not assume maybe something like the central project, which hasn't been funded yet, correct?
Right, not as at at this point. So those little actors at the bottom are kind of footnotes to say what we've pulled out of the fund balance. It's mostly on capital projects. And there were times where we moved money into that account to make the payment from there, but those were really for capital projects that we borrowed money from a lot of them. So pretty much anything that we're moving was for um capital projects. There were a few adjustments before I got here, just in the audits for, see, there was one that was five hundred thousand dollars the other way, but there wasn't a transfer. It was more of an accounting change, I guess. So I just, for ease of demonstration, I just can included those smaller numbers that were transfers. So a year ago, we thought we would end FY thirty one with fourteen point nine million dollars. And updated in this February, this March, um using uh eighteen point nine. So that, yeah, so fourteen point nine, now we're looking at that and being eighteen point nine. So an improvement of four million dollars. And then I added two more years on that.
So how how is that coming about or what's the difference there? Because I guess what's two hundred thousand in current, but then something obviously is either in the assumptions or somehow it's it's getting a lot better, that that hump is getting a lot bigger in the in the updated projection.
Right, so like two hundred thousand isn't gonna make that big difference over that time. But um we get to four million dollar improvement. There's uh I made different assumptions on the revenue, which is uh we hit uh dampened what we expected for property tax back when.
Right. If you, yeah, I'm sorry to cut you off, but if you recall, uh we're, we've been, projections that Jim were doing have always been really good and they've been very conservative. So I wanted us to get a little bit more, be more realistic. And so we, he's, we've always, um like, as you can see, we've always put so much money into our into our capital accounts. We always have a huge reserve at the end. And so I've asked him to be a little bit more, more realistic and not as conservative as he's been in the past to sort of reflect more real world of what we we would expect. So I don't know all the details of the assumptions, but that is like one reason this is looking a lot better because we're trying to be more realistic in what we're looking at.
So that two hundred thousand, I've added the fund balance of really four point one million we added and we put three point nine out. So a kind of a profit was closer to four million. So when I, since I got here, when I was doing projections, I kind of wanted it to be ninety five to hundred percent sure that we're gonna be done. And um we keep adding a lot to fund balance, three or four million a year. So I tried to take the approach that seventy five percent confidence is okay. There might be a case for a time where there's a little under. We could do some better planning if we know what's gonna be added each time. So instead of backing into the property tax revenue, I just, I kind of took that by itself and said, okay, well, this is what's really happened. Don't don't act on my numbers. Just the balance does see how how I would do if if I did about my money and I'd come and put the right number.
So you probably have more saved aside for contingencies and things like that, unknown, unknowns. Is that what you've softened then?
Yeah, I, well, in a sense, the contingencies were kind of hidden. We knew it would show up by the time the audit came. We're trying to recognize it a little earlier now, but still be comfortable that we can at least meet these numbers if not exceeding. So I added um better revenue projections, higher revenue projections, closer property tax, lower the early time investment, right? We didn't, before this inflation came, we were making less out of our investments, uh interest. So I used that lower number even though we should have a couple of good years to this happen. I just, I'll have a new plan with state and federal, just took out those beggesser numbers and assumed that the normal things we did from state and federal were left for. And then on the expenditure side, I think it's higher numbers for inflation, not seven percent, but I put four percent in a few years and then doing that percent before. So that's, it's a better revenue number than slightly higher expenditure number would get us to this point.
Can you talk a little bit about, a little bit deeper about the property tax um revenues and how you would anticipate them being greater?
Sure. They um I, when we first, you know, came from the, we uh went back to two thousand eight, that was, you know, the closest kind of economic problem we had to what was going on recently. And so I just, I kind of followed those and and the money, the property tax money eventually comes in and um but we, you know, two years ago, I guess, projected that it it wouldn't. So instead of our normal ninety eight to ninety nine percent collections, we had it down to ninety five, ninety six. So um kind of just in case. But if, even if there's been a delay on the money coming in, if somebody doesn't pay it, eventually somebody pays it. They either buy that house or uh and pay the back taxes on it. So that it's more of a cash flow issue instead of we're not gonna get it. So I I kind of dropped that theory of not getting it.
It's a matter of it'll come eventually. Did you find people, I don't know if you know this from talking to the village, but um we're kind of appealing their property taxes more recently and and getting changes in their taxes. Have you, I don't know what's been happening recently with people. What's your take on that?
Some of the the big ones, uh the businesses.
Businesses?
The mall and the, I think the country club that that was a little while ago. I haven't, I don't know that I would notice, but I I haven't noticed residents doing that.
Do you feel like collections were where they should be?
Yeah.
Where they were anticipated to be.
Right. And and this year it came in a little slower with the problems with Cook County, but.
Well, right, everybody had to deal with that then, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions on projections? So when we, we'll use, we'll update it when we do the next budget and then I'll plug it into this and go forward. So.
Well, I do appreciate the the shift, Dave, of just, you know, trying to, because we have been very conservative, but kind of getting out of that conservative mindset of like the unknown.
These are still, right, these are still very conservative.
Still conservative, just not as drastic.
Yeah.
But a lot of, a lot of what we had concerns about having never really came to fruition. So like getting, getting out of that mindset and like back to reality, I think is a good shift. And you know, every time we do this, I feel like you just sort of wave a magic wand. It's just like, okay, we get it, like, we're with you. But it's like, I, so I like seeing when we cross over that, okay, we've adjusted some things, we've looked at some additional assessments, we've adjusted for that, and we continue to be on a really good path, just in general. So being able to see that ten year vision here and that, you know, every time we kind of slump down, it's like we we adjust accordingly and we're we're staying ahead of it. So I I appreciate that.
It's always hard. I mean, as we all know, it's always hard to project ten years on, well, in five years, ten years is.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, we talk about it here once a year, but we're monitor more than that. And if there was something missed, we're not gonna, we're not stuck with what's up there for ten years. We'll make adjustments.
That's why we have the reserve and I think it's important to maintain decent reserves because you just never know. But I appreciate, I do appreciate a more realistic look and thank you.
It definitely is important to maintain the reserves. I I do wonder, because I've seen this bubble for quite some time and it keeps getting pushed out further. I I would wonder, since I've been on the board, I would wonder if we are already supposed to have crossed that threshold. Maybe the first year I was on the board, it wouldn't shock me. So it it does make sense to treat things more realistically.
I I just remember the first year on the board, well, my first year on the board, we were talking about finance projections and how things were, how we were supposedly gonna be facing a lot of these dire straits. And I just remember going, the sky is really not falling. It's just, we just have to figure out, it's just, we've always been adding so much money to the reserves, I mean, to, or more specifically to capital, to fund these projects. This has, we have to start taking this into account because for so many, so long, it's always been that curve, we're gonna like, we're gonna cross that, we're gonna lose our reserve, we're not gonna have that fund balance. We just have to be a little bit more realistic. And that's, to me, very important because we've been putting away, I I went back actually before this meeting, we've been putting away like, I think the lowest year, the least amount we put away for in capital and reserves, I should say, was two million dollars. And this is like the last eight years. We've been putting away millions of dollars every year. We have to, this has to be, we have to demonstrate like how much money we were really bringing in. We have to, this has to be, we have to demonstrate like how much money we were really bringing in. And, I mean, this is not, we have to plan for the future, but we have to take care of the kids today. So let's start spending, I mean, so that's why I'm not, when we talk about these capital projects or we talk about this, it's like, we've got the money, so let's just do it.
Is some of this due to the?
I'm not talking about spending frivolously, but I'm like, let's spend the money, so.
Is some of this due to the Esther's money from?
The Esther's money offset it certainly for a short period of time. But like you said, you took back, you took the Esther's money back out, that you backed it out, is what you were just saying in your assumption.
So you backed it back out, because we, some of those, some of those teachers or support people that we are paying for, we're going to have to resume coming up with those salaries, right?
We kind of put it in, you know, we put it in some facilities pieces.
Yeah, more, more one-time spending.
I thought it was support staff or nursing, or I can't remember what we used it for, but.
We've got.
Permanent subs, did we use the permanent subs?
Right.
I think so. I think, I think that was the case.
Yeah, we did use for, I mean.
I was just wondering how much of that bump is, is due to that kind of money.
But I guess the fact is that we only had Esther's money for like the last couple of years.
Oh, I know, I know.
Millions for several years.
Yeah, it probably, I mean, it certainly helped us, you know.
Even without, I always put this way, even without the Esther's money, we would have put away millions of dollars anyway.
I think some of that beginning, when I first got on the board, was in anticipation of all of these capital projects. We really did want to be prepared. We didn't want to have to go to the public and say, we need money for these projects. Because we knew, when I, I first took a tour with, with Todd and, oh my gosh, we have this small gym, we're all eating in here and it was a huge problem. Everyone was bursting at the seams and I know a lot of us said, let's get, let's get prepared. And I am really grateful at least that we didn't have to ask for the money. And we ended up buying all these property, you know, it, it, we didn't realize how big it would get.
And also really nice work has been done with, you know, and I think of the addition of full day kindergarten also, of course, and not just full day kindergarten, but they added specials teachers that went along with that. Certainly all the facilities projects.
But keeping, keeping the ISB rating has been great and I know, yeah, anything you can do to maintain that certainly gives us an edge with, you know, I don't think, I would not want us to borrow money unless we really need it, but it's always helpful.
Colin, and the thing is too, with the numbers today, there's no need to borrow money. I mean, just looking at them, there's no need for us to borrow money.
Well, four million, I, when I saw it, I was like, what?
Yeah. And I, I never feel in good conscience going to do anything for a referendum, a referendum on this. But I mean, I guess the one question that, like, I know people ask is like, when the auditor's here, somebody asks, I don't know, like, how many districts don't have debt? I think the more appropriate question would be, how many districts have done like a nineteen plus million dollar project and not taken any debt on to do that? That would be the more appropriate question.
Or ask for a referendum, some of them do ask for the money right there.
Right.
And then people get a big, they get angry that they have to, you know, put up the money then.
But, but who's, who's taking that money? I mean, I guess, how many districts have done that without taking on debt, without going to referendum?
Not too many.
I, I would say there's, my guess is none. I mean, I don't, I can't, I mean, I'd really be interested to know, but I would be surprised if it was more than just one or two.
But keep in mind, we, you know, we, we do have, there'll be a new teacher contract. There'll be other issues to think about and I, I won't be here, but you are going to have to think about your staff and I think in the coming years and how, how you encourage people to stay and consider this a wonderful place to work. Because we do have wonderful people in administrative students, so it's, that's, since we're working on facilities.
A good point to make.
Definitely things to think about, how that will change your finances in the future.
It's definitely a great point to make. I mean, we, we definitely have a contract with, with teachers for, in effect, for the next, what, two years of this one?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Three years, okay. So yes, well, it, it is quite possible, should we still be in a seven percent CPI world, that that line might look a little bit more jagged toward, pointing towards upwards in future years. So that's definitely something to keep in mind as well, absolutely.
Seven CPI would be, oh my gosh, yeah.
Eggs will be fifty dollars a turn by now.
That's right.
Well, if it's any consolation, my parents' house when they first bought it, talking about inflation, was less than I spent on my first car.
Oh, gosh, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
All right, and then last but not least is the Personnel Committee.
Nothing major tonight. Martha and I met yesterday, actually, and speaking of thinking about the staff, that's a lot of what we spent talking about. Just, you know, money's not everything and we can't pay them four hundred thousand a year to teach. And so how do you create a good environment and how do you make people want to stay? We've got a lot of the work with Nate Eklund and I don't know what, it's not Eklund Group anymore. Vital Network now. Vital Network now and he's came in or coming, coming back?
Yeah, we've been doing their survey, so we've really been consulting with them informally, he hasn't been here in person.
Okay, and he, he was, was he coming, no, it was Don coming in to do the, yeah, the living plan stuff. And then we talked about just some other general staff stuff that's not really like any closed session item to come up, but just kind of Martha and I just talk a lot about personnel type things and like, do we have the right staff? Do we, you know, what needs are there and just assessing those needs and just trying to prep for any kind of ask for the board? There isn't anything currently, just tactical type stuff, I guess would be the best way to explain it. And we met with Don, Don went through just preparation for the April COW meeting, so there'll be more to talk around the, the goal and the progress towards that goal at the April meeting. And I think that was pretty much the gist of it, right? Yep. Nothing for action, but I always feel like I say I have nothing because a lot of our stuff is not open session topics, so I'm trying to figure out ways to say like, I am doing stuff.
I've heard about just even providing, you know, those small little snacks and meals for the staff. I think that goes a long way.
We talked about that, actually.
I can remember being, being on an after-school committee and we were so hungry and a little cart came in and I will tell you, those kind of things do matter, even if it's not a trivial amount of.
Yeah. You had said you got some really good feedback, you had done, I don't know if this is widely known, but you had done a breakfast at each school and I think you or the staff or something went around.
Yeah, our cabinet team visited each school, actually Kathy Pirino was the one that was out early in the morning buying the donuts and bagels and the coffee, so thanks to her.
And it seemed like it was really well received.
I think they were well received and I think we'll do it again, January, February is kind of a bleak time and it was nice, we joined them at seven thirty and it was, come if you can, drink a cup of coffee or hot chocolate with us. And I think it was just a nice informal interaction and opportunity.
Yeah, and I had sort of, kind of on that line and I'd sort of tossed out, you know, potential consideration, I think. You know, if they're talking about finances and stuff, that doesn't really cost a lot of money.
No.
If there's a, you know, if anybody would be interested in like getting together at one of the schools after school for just a general social hour, just trying to find ways to like help people interact in a, in a way that's more natural and inviting for them, since you are, you are in a unique situation here. It's not, you see your teachers in the hall, but you don't really cross across the schools and we're talking about collaboration and stuff earlier. So we did, we, we spent a lot of time just talking about like the people stuff and just creating a inclusive environment and people getting to know their peers and things like that, interacting with people that they don't normally get to naturally interact with and stuff like that, so we probably talked about that for a solid forty minutes and just kicking around ideas and stuff like that.
Building community peace within your buildings and cross building, yeah, good, good.
So at the end of the day, the, the contract is the thing that, that kind of matters and we have that philosophy of, we don't want to underpay, we can't afford to, you know, over, or be in some of these like higher paid districts, but we want to be competitive, but then how do we bring other things that, like, how do we bring a culture that can't be competed against and stuff like that? Just try to bring the whole district, the whole school, the whole community.
Yeah.
And not just the contract piece of it, professional development, language and pay and all the other stuff that goes into it, so.
I will say, having the space to allow class sizes to be a certain way or a certain limit does make it more attractive place to work than having everyone packed in because you have nowhere else to put them. I think teachers will realize, oh, they care about facilities and they care about us having space to interact with the kids. And I, so I, I really appreciated everything that had been kind of upgraded because it was, it was, somebody that had been here, it was really tight for some of these buildings. Not all of them, but a couple of them were really bad, so hopefully that's helping, yeah.
I think it definitely is, yeah. I've personally heard some positive feedback about the addition of Ames too, just having my kids at this school. I've heard that more than once, just how much people really like and appreciate the openness particular in this part of the building.
Well, the library really is.
Yeah, everybody come onto the library, it is nice, yeah.
And this early learners hub, I mean, it's all, yeah.
I thought so.
So that, that's all I have for now. So if there's any topics on your guys' mind that you want Martha and I to kick around for a future conversation, let us know.
I just wanted to mention, because I lost my board member comment opportunity earlier by being silent and this is somewhat related to personnel, I guess.
This is why you were staring at.
Yeah, sorry, I was, have a, look, it took me a while to, for my brain to turn on this evening, apologies. But, so at Hollywood, so both as a parent and as a board member, I was really impressed recently. I, I often am, of course, with our district, but at Hollywood, we had a new student join the third grade class. I, I don't know that a student, that we often have students join kind of this late in the school year. And I was blown away by our third grade teacher, Ms. Brackett, who was in fifth, was teaching fifth grade before. She had all the students write these very thoughtful cards and notes and some kids put like little gotchas in there to give her and advice and tips and stickers. And she delivered it to this family's home on Friday in anticipation of Monday. And her starting was four.
Oh, before they came.
On Friday, she dropped all of this off to the family and to the young girl who started the third grade class. And I just thought, again, it's like that above and beyond, it really just blew me away both as a parent. She sent the parents like photos of everything that the kids worked on to welcome this new student and they just had an opportunity, like you're talking about all these like teaching moments, like teaching the little ones to really understand how difficult this must be for a child to move, you know, have this far into a school year, into a new district. So I know it's such a welcoming community, you know, of course Hollywood, I think, is also a very special place as a Hollywood parent. But that just really struck a chord in me.
That's so cool.
So yeah, just under that personnel feel-good story, they are amazing. And that, that's probably not an isolated story.
Right, that's wonderful.
I know there are.
That had to help with the nerves, because I mean, for the kid going into a brand environment, so to have that, that hopefully helped, yeah. Well, related to that, not personnel related, but related to that, being the PTA, PTO liaison, that, that actually got brought up, has actually been brought up a couple of times, but there was a good discussion around the, the five school presidents on trying to do something similar for parents or just families in general, but like having a, what do they call like?
Like parent ambassador, parent mentor.
Yeah, ambassador was kind of how they looked at it. It was like doing like, here's some tips, here's some things to know, here's some, just things to be aware of and whatever. So they're, they're trying to work on that and kind of figure some of those things out, so that is interesting, but, yeah, that's pretty cool.
I'll add one thing, sorry, you reminded me when we were talking about the gifted policy. There's a math club at Central run by Ms. Eddie, who's the advanced math teacher. And you, but you don't have to be in the advanced class to go. There's like forty kids in there, it's amazing. I was so excited to hear there's forty kids that are voluntarily going after school and I don't know how, it's for fourth and fifth, I don't know how many fifth graders, there's a whole separate bunch of them. But props to the Ms. Eddie for promoting math after school for fun, which I don't think they've done it before, maybe I'm wrong.
Right, and well, we know, I know I got an email that we needed extra adults to help because there's so many kids interested.
Well, she could do it in her room because her room could not hold everybody, so they went into Mr. E's room, which was slightly bigger, and so that was exciting, that they wanted to go and, and just talk math problems, which is so funny.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we got some good people here, so, anyway, that's it.
All right. Well, that brings us back around to public comment.
There's none.
No public comment, all right. And future meeting dates are March fifteenth, regular business meeting at seven PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. The board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven PM. April fifth, committee of the whole in the gym at Life Park School, seven PM. April nineteenth, regular business meeting, seven PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.